Good evening. I'd like to call this May 8th meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to Order. First item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Members, do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And thank you and welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. I know it's a beautiful evening and there's tons of other things that you could be doing, so I appreciate you coming and spending time with us tonight. Will you please rise, remove your headgear, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. And please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now move into our public comments section. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind everyone that all public comments should be directed to the board as a whole, should follow our pillars of character, and should follow the three-minute timeframe. There will be a 30-second tone to let you know that you're getting near the end of your speaking period. And the first person signed up tonight is Patsy Dove.
My name is Patsy Dove. Your bullying policy looks great on paper but has a lot of flaws that has needed to be addressed. Why I know this is because our family and other families are dealing with this. We have dealt with it for seven years. Bullying is damaging our kids mentally and physically. My grandson graduated last year by the grace of God. He walked into middle school as a kind, caring, happy-go-lucky kid, but by the end of eighth grade, he was a shell of himself. And finally, in 10th grade, his brain went from flight to fight. He asked for help, but by doing that, he spent a week in a mental hospital, which traumatized him even more. Two and a half years on suicide watch. My grandson has PTSD from the bullying. I thank God each day that he's still alive. Now, my granddaughter, same middle school. She started in the school system at age three. At four and a half, Scott Hand said, "These are the kids that fall through the cracks." She has always known she is different, but we taught her that everyone is different and just be kind. At nine and a half, we found out a kid with 20/20 vision couldn't see correctly. Her world consists of living in a tunnel that was flat and seeing two of everything. I spent one and a half years of time and money for vision therapy to give my granddaughter a chance. She loved school and all her teachers, so she was a ray of sunshine and full of kindness. Sixth grade, she started hating school. Seventh grade, we realized early on she was being bullied. We saw the same signs. My granddaughter was blindsided by the cruelty of other kids. It started as words, then kids trying to hit her. One girl, three different times did. Last all, boys told her to go kill herself. School knew all about it. Finally, after sending this to everyone, she got a safety plan put in place, but the damage was already done. Panic attacks, depression, headaches, heart racing. Eighth grade, her headaches got worse. In November, we found out she had lost her peripheral vision and her 3D vision. Flight to fight caused the autonomic nervous system to get out of whack. From November till now, 65 appointments, $5,000 out of my pocket. That's not including what insurance paid. She has finally got her peripheral vision back. I'm not just being an upset grandma. When you have a psychiatrist ask what kind of school system he was dealing with, when you have a counselor saying, "These kids just want to be validated and heard, and they shouldn't be treated the way," when an eye doctor says that a school system should be sued for letting the bullying going on as long as it did, my granddaughter saying, "I don't feel safe. I don't think somebody's going to shoot up the school. I just don't know what the kids are going to do." These kids have stolen her self-confidence, her trust, and feeling safe. The kids that I know are being bullied say the same thing. They do nothing. It's like talking to a wall. We are adults, and we need to help them. I've asked you to talk to the families that are experiencing this. We can tell you what is working and what is not. We need to be the change. I know it's in all schools, and I thank everyone for trying to help. Teachers, special ed, and principals, but more needs to be done to stop these kids from harming their classmates. Thank you.
Our next speaker? Our next speaker is Sandra Parks.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Parks, and I'm a retired school librarian with 31 years of experience in working with kids. I've recommended thousands of books to thousands of kids, and it has been such a joy to make those connections. Students need and deserve choice in their reading material. I've talked previously about the need for increased autonomy for students as they grow into adulthood, and that includes their reading. Now, there are some that would limit choice outside of the board-approved policy for reconsideration of materials if there is a book that needs to be looked at. There's been talk of a rating system, which in my professional experience, I vehemently oppose. Kids come in all different stages, sometimes in the same year. You see them grow and change in their needs. To rate the book, you also have to rate the kids. Not all 13-year-olds are all the same. Rating systems use quantitative measures. They ignore the whole of the book, and what they provide is numbers, the number of curse words, scatological references, or sexual references. They ignore how the characters grew and developed, what they learned, what hardships they overcame. They ignore the Miller Test, that is the legal standard for obscenity, which maintains that the book and its purpose be considered as a whole, which is what the reconsideration policy also requires. Now, the rating system most recently mentioned that perhaps the school system consider book looks focuses exactly on those word counts. However, you must know, it is also a product of Moms for Liberty, a group originally out of Florida with a strong anti-LGBTQ bias that is responsible for hundreds of books being banned, taken away from kids all over America. Rating systems lead to book bans, and I believe rather than letting Moms for Liberty choose books for our children, we let our highly qualified school librarians make those choices, working with parents. Parents can limit what their own children can read, but we cannot ignore the rights of other parents, and we cannot ignore the needs of kids. The needs of kids for those books that can provide those windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors that help them make sense of their world and what they're feeling. And so, I urge you all to keep making a wide variety of books available for our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes our comments from the public tonight, and we will move on to our board member comments. Mr. Falk? Mr. Breeden?
I guess that's a highlight, too. Thank you.
Dr. McQuilkin?
Thank you, Ms. Lauren. First of all, I'd like to make everybody aware that this is National Teacher Appreciation Week, and we're here to tell all teachers that we support them. We are absolutely grateful for the impact that they give to our students every single day of the year. So, thank you. Thank you, teachers. My second highlight is that I attended the FFA banquet, and there are many FFA banquets going on throughout the schools, and we appreciate everybody participating, and we thank the FFA for their work. Lastly, is the, oh, not lastly, third is the Elkton Middle School Musical, which was on this week. It's the last of the musicals, and we appreciated all the work that the students did, and the teachers, and everyone, the parents, and the community who supported the musicals. Thank you very much. And my last highlight is an update for the superintendent search. We're getting closer to making a selection for the superintendent, and we just wanted you to know that we're working hard on this decision.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin, and I'll go ahead and follow you, because what she said, basically. FFA banquets, musical, you did miss the prom. Proms, I think all the proms have completed. I know they're in full swing, and I'd like to thank all the volunteers who helped provide a safe space for our after-prom students, and everyone who just worked really hard to provide even prom. It's so nice to be able to have prom again, isn't it? You just don't realize what you have until it's gone for a little while. So, it's a busy, busy spring, and thanks, definitely thanks to our teachers. Please, if you have a moment this week, reach out to your favorite or some of your favorite teachers this week, and just tell them thanks for all they've done. And now, Dr. Scheichel.
Let's say, no Teacher Appreciation Week. Yes, thank you to all the educators in our buildings, and had a chance to talk to some of them today at Peak View and McAkeesville, and will visit some other schools, you know, this week. I also had a chance last week to drive a bus route for McAkeesville Elementary School. So, Lowell Wright, one of the bus drivers, Bus 26, got to drive his morning route through Massanatment and down to McAkeesville. And then finally, I'd mentioned this before, you know, a few years ago, Rockingham County Schools was selected as one of 65 initial demonstration districts in the country. So, just for reference, there are about 10,000 school districts in the country for the Learning 2025 Project from ASA, so National Superintendent's Association. And yesterday, we were selected as a good choice for our application as a lighthouse system. We did not get selected as a lighthouse system, but the only reason for that is that for our Strong Starts and Tier Systems of Support projects, we don't have enough years of data yet. So, it's a, as a result, we're designated as a system to watch, and will be recognized at the National Conference in Washington, DC in June. And we were also invited to present on the topic of Strong Starts and Tier Systems at that conference in DC. That's the National Summit for Learning 2025. So, that's a good recognition to have, and just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll move into our action items portion. This is where we do the voting and the really heavy lifting work for the meeting. And we're going to start with minutes. Oh, members, we have minutes from April 24th before you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I move that we approve the minutes of April 24th as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Members, you have before you the bills. Dr. Scheichel, did you want to comment on the bill?
I recommend approval of the April bills and mileage as presented in your materials.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Do I have a motion?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the April bills as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the April bills is unanimous. Next on the agenda are field trips. Dr. Scheichel?
Board members, you have a number of field trips for approval tonight, from Turner Ashby High School, FCCLA State Officer Training, June 19th through the 21st, one student in Blacksburg, FCCLA National Competition, July 1st through the 7th, seven students in Denver, Colorado, and the FFA State Convention, June 20th through the 23rd, 15 students to Blacksburg, and from Wilbur Pence, also the FFA State Convention, June 20th through the 23rd, 20 students to Blacksburg, Virginia, and I recommend approval of those field trips as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion regarding the field trips? Hearing none. We'll vote on the recommendation to approve the field trips as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Salary scales. Dr. Scheichel?
Uh, it's Mrs. Mast. I just about made you a doctor. Chair, Lord, members of the board, and Dr. Scheichel, this evening at your seat, you have a copy of the 23-24 Wage and Salary Handbook. I'll remind you that in the budget season, we were able, even though there was that skinny budget that was passed, we were able to offer 5% raises for almost all employees. The assistants and the behavioral assistants did receive a greater than 5% raise. And so, the salary handbook represents a 5% raise for those employees, and then if the budget is passed later in June, there may be some changes made to these and addendums made to contracts. But I believe the path that we're on contracts will have to go out based on the 5%, probably.
Thank you, Ms. Mast.
I recommend approval of the salary scales for fiscal year 2024 as presented, and want to thank Ms. Mast for her team's work on these and for everything else.
You're welcome. Board members, do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Mr. Breeden, was that a second? Thank you. Discussion? I'd just like to say also, excuse me, thank you for all of your work on this. What are the tea leaves telling us? I've kind of been reading the news, but for the record, what's the General Assembly doing?
I've heard from a couple different places now that there probably isn't going to be any decision made till after June 20. So, that means we will be looking at late June for anything. I even heard one of my colleagues make a statement that they had heard, I don't know how official that is, it could even go into July and be retroactive to July 1. So, there probably will be some last-minute budgeting that has to occur very late in the year.
Oh, great. And you're not going to be here for that, are you?
That's correct.
Can everybody read the deer in the headlights? Look ahead. So, great. Thank you. Maybe you stay a little while.
I will do the best I can.
Can we talk you out of it? But thank you. Yes, this is, Ms. Mast has taken a position with JMU, if I may, and we're going to deeply, deeply miss you. Thank you for the many years of service that you've given Rockingham County Public Schools and the many, many budget. Well, I don't want to sound, that sounds like a lot, but the-
I am that old.
How many years have you been with us?
I've been here 26.
26 years of budgets for Rockingham County Schools. Thank you so much for your service. Can we give Ms. Mast a round of applause? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion?
Words cannot describe the pleasure that it's been working with you, Cheryl. And I can tell you that the shoes to fill the hole that will be left will not be possible to fill. And I just hope that all of those out there who are involved with Rockingham County Schools, when they hear that huge sucking sound come June 30th, it's by the hole that's been created. And thank you.
Hearing none. We'll vote on the motion to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the salary scales for fiscal year '24 as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I believe now you need to talk about student accident insurance.
Yes. Before you this evening is a recommendation for our student accident insurance. I'll remind you just what this is. It is a voluntary program that gives parents an option to buy accidental insurance for their children. And there's different, you can buy it for just the school day, for 24 hours, whatever, but for children that are not covered by any type of health insurance, this at least is an accident policy, and it also meets the requirements for VHSL. So, if we have a high school student that wants to participate in sports but does not have health coverage, they can purchase this, and it's very reasonable and rate, and they can then participate. We received two different policies from two different groups, and I reviewed both of them, and my recommendation, based on what the policy covers and cost, that we go with K&amp;K Insurance for 23-24 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Mast. Dr. Scheichel?
And I do recommend approval of the plan for voluntary student accident insurance as submitted by K&amp;K Insurance for the 23-24 school year.
Thank you. Dr. Scheichel. Board members, do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion? Is K&amp;K who we've been using?
It is currently, we use currently.
That's what I thought. Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the plan for voluntary student accident insurance as submitted by K&amp;K for the 23-24 school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have bid recommendations for the East Rockingham High School bus loop by Mr. Reed.
Dr. Scheichel, Madam Chair, members of the board, the bid for asphalt replacement East Rockingham High School bus loop was specified and advertised. We had seven firms. They were sent the bid package, and we had one firm return a sealed bid. I want to note that it says asphalt replacement, but the project is much more than just asphalt replacement. It's replaced taking up asphalt, taking up sub base, putting in a drainage system. We have a water problem underneath, and then building it back up. There is an allowance in there for 250 cubic yards of base material, and we've got a unit price in there. And the contract price will be adjusted accordingly to how much material has to be removed and new material put in. Our recommendation is to award the bid to Partners Excavating in the amount of $117,094.
Thank you. Dr. Scheichel?
I recommend approval of the contract to Partners Excavating in the amount of $117,094.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to follow the superintendent's recommendation to award the contract for asphalt replacement in the bus loop at East Rockingham High School, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have policy revisions by Dr. Aldifer.
Chair, Lord, members of the board, Dr. Scheichel, we have one policy for your approval this evening. It is policy GBOB, which is retirement pay. Essentially, there was one adjustment that has been made that provides a second provision for which retirees could receive some benefits, and that is moving from just 10 years of consecutive service to having five years of uninterrupted service immediately prior to retirement and a total of 15 years with RCPS total. So, someone who was with us and then left and returned would still be eligible.
Thank you. Dr. Scheichel?
I recommend approval of the proposed policy revision as presented by Dr. Aldifer.
Thank you. Board members, do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do I have a second? Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion? So, this means that Ms. Mast could come back and get more, right?
Technically, yes.
I kid. But is there any further, any serious discussion on the matter? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Aldifer. That concludes our action items for the evening. Board members, for your information, you have financial review and attendance report in your packet. And now, we'll move on to other business, school board questions and comments. And I'm going to start again with Mr. Falk. Thank you. Mr. Breeden? Okay, all right. Dr. McQuilkin?
Yes. This evening, I would like to say a few words about Mr. Breeden. Mr. Breeden, for the last, since January, has been, every comment period, he's been remarking about somebody in the community. He's been saying accolades for various people. So, this evening, I would like to give some accolades to Mr. Breeden. I checked Carl G. Showalter was who served on the Rockingham County School Board. He served for 27 and a half years, and he is seconded by Mr. Breeden, who is, when he steps down, will have served at least 23 and five years, 23 and a half years. So, only one term separates the two, and that is really a remarkable, remarkable accomplishment. And so, I would like for us to recognize him this evening. In addition to being a longstanding member of this board, I would like to talk a little bit about his character. Everybody knows how I strongly feel about character counts, and on this board, character counts. And Mr. Breeden, you are a gentleman of character. You are caring. You are supportive. You're a listener. And always, always, in the decisions that he has made on this board, he has spoken on behalf of the best interests of the students, the staff, the parents in the community, the families in the community at large. We on the board, many of you do not know, have three main responsibilities. First of all, we're responsible for the budget. Ms. Mast knows how we work closely with her on that, and of course, the superintendent, Dr. Scheichel. We are also responsible for the policies. And our third main responsibility is the selection of the superintendent. Mr. Breeden has had the honor and the privilege, and we, the honor and the privilege, of having him selected three superintendents for Rockingham County Schools. I think that probably is a record. So, I would say to you that Mr. Breeden has been extraordinarily responsible fiscally. He always has policies, and he thinks about them. He's very thoughtful with his policies, and he's an outstanding contributor to this board, and we will miss him greatly. I think we should give him a great big hand, and we should stand it.
Thank you for that, Dr. McQuilkin. Did you have anything else? Mr. Breeden, did you want to take an opportunity now?
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. I apologize for my emotion this evening.
Thank you. Do we have any students here tonight? I think we have a few. Great. Thank you, guys, for coming. You're all seniors? So, you're all, how many days left? How many days left? Do you know off the top of your head?
I'm like five.
Oh, you're a freshman? How many days?
I'm like five, something like that.
Is it that many?
Yeah.
I was like, gosh, you seniors should have it counted down to the- I was like, gosh, you seniors should have it counted down to the minute, but the teacher knows. 19 days left, and then, and then you guys are out in the world. Yeah, you're excited now. So, thank you all for being with us tonight. All, all students, thank you for being here tonight, and seniors, just best of luck to you all as you move forward. And, Dr. Scheichel, do you have anything to add tonight?
I just want to join Charlotte in saying thank you today, and I know, sitting in the seat here, and it's not easy tonight, but thank you for everything.
And finally, members, we have reason to enter into closed session. Do I have a motion? Do we have it?
To enter closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-371-1181 personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees, including the division superintendent, for the purpose of considering such individual's assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do I have a second? Thank you, Dr. McQuelkin, and just to let, to make everyone aware, we actually have a specific motion that has to be read specifically with the exact wording so that we can discuss those exact things, and that is all we are allowed to discuss while we're in closed session. And some of those things, we, we do have on the agenda tonight, so we needed Mr. Falk to read the entire, the, the motion in its entirety. Is there any, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Everyone, please have safe travels home, have a wonderful beginning of May, and we are in closed session.